Welcome, that's right. Yes, I will call to order this public meeting. And there it is. So we'll start off with them. Public comments, I'm not sure who is here and who is not, but we have three people signed up to speak. If you are signed up to speak.
That's, I'm sorry Jacob, that's for the board meeting?
That's for the board?
No, inside the curriculum.
Oh, you said that.
Not for curriculum.
Okay, fine, no one is here to speak. I guess I feel a certain way about that, but so it goes. I guess the first item on the agenda is to approve minutes from the September 30th, 2025 work session. So this is my first time doing.
So just if everybody does have a chance to read the minutes.
Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
I have not, so I'll abstain.
Okay, I have read this.
I have as well.
Okay, then we can vote to approve the minutes by show of hand.
Thank you for your help. I was voted to approve the minutes by show of hand, on favor. All opposed, all abstaining. Great, so the motion passes to have an important hearing seen so much. So now the next discussion item wanted to talk about was the.
Sorry, I was just checking off our, just.
Yeah, look at us go. And that's the end of this meeting. So next up for 4.1, we're going to go into vision setting. Well, for that, I was hoping that Tricia would share.
Yeah.
A document. For our work on the curriculum committee. You know, in our focus as board members of being all about students, right? Like what should, should the student experience be at school? How should we best be supporting students? I think with the curriculum committee in particular. Our charge is around the student experience in terms of their engagement at school and also their academic experience at school. In conversation with Mary. In setting the agenda, we started to think, so what should our vision be? It's sort of like grounded in the overall goals of the city school district, which you can see right there, culture of excellence, equity and communication. And in the spirit of doing. I don't know, of thinking a little less in terms of edute speak is sort of like how we called it, right? Like the words that maybe make sense to. A certain. Subset of educators, but rather thinking, what do we want to be true? For students that we could clearly share. With teachers, with faculty members, with parents, families, community members. We thought about these three things. And for future agenda setting, our hope was that we might take some variation of these that you see. And use these to sort of be our North Star, our guidance for how we spend our time. The priorities we set, how we work with. The district office, how we work with the ITA, had a productive conversation with Catherine. About agenda setting as well. I do need, well, if this actually wouldn't do anything, that would just felt good, I'm sorry. So. I would love, I guess, to start with the curriculum committee members to sort of hear when you see this. When you think about this, what? An instructional routine that sometimes we do as students is what do we notice and wonder? Like, what are we seeing and what are we thinking? First, before we get into more discussion critique, etc. And anyone can share, let's just have an open conversation for me over the next five minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm just looking at the common and coherent experience and thinking about. You know, a sense that I might have that, that there are different experiences that might be happening across schools. I mean, some of it has to do with the cultural of each school. I guess some of it has to do with, you know, student learning, how things are going at each different school. You know, so possibly looking at the way that. Classes that are taught in different schools by different teachers, but that are supposed to talk about the same content. You know, keeping those consistent with, with the ideal. Even in the context of whatever culture is. So I, I guess it's just something that's jumping out at me. Not even saying that it's not happening, but just certainly being something important to. To keep in mind, so. I don't know what other people.
I'm going to be extraordinarily blunt and just say the words common and coherent just stand out to me as. Impossibilities and. It goes against human nature. For some students, a coherent experience might not be possible unless we really adapt our mindsets and our learnings. And our teaching. And as far as common, everyone's backgrounds. Makes it impossible for it to be common, and I find that worth just being. Again, I'm going to be extraordinarily blunt, worthless, and I think that we can do better. I don't know if I can do better right now. But. I, I think maybe say have a positive experience because I don't think common is a word that we should strive for.
How about consistent?
Consistent is a much better word, yes. Comparable is. Is a synonym to common. I don't think comparable.
I'll shoot context in a little bit, but what also left here, either you, I'm sorry, if you have more or else.
No. The first thing I thought of was just the change in the way that the district has kind of approached. Set plans this year compared to last year and that this kind of shift seems to be. In play there, which. Which I think it's great and it's a, a recognition. I, I do agree with Aaron. I think that. Maybe consistent or something makes more sense, but I do, I do. Like that there is an opportunity in those step plans to kind of follow. Something, a kind of, kind of consistent model across the board and recognizing though that the way that that's implemented and the students that are receiving it are very different and the needs are different and may to receive that in different ways. But the practices themselves and the goals of those practices seem to be. Consistent and coherent. And so I'm, I'm encouraged by that, that we're seeing some of that work happening. I also had a fascinating conversation recently with a. With a new teacher who started just this year, both in their teaching career in general and at ICSD. And just had a really. Extensive conversation about the differences between. Following standards. As the sole guide for, for teaching practice throughout the year and for curriculum development. And how there might be an opportunity to be able to. Make those more practical and. And, and defined around content to actually make it easier enough as for. To not just make it more coherent and consistent for students, but also to make it a lot easier for us. Teachers to be able to model in Africa, even if they then take that and, and again. Follow their own kind of teaching path and, and strategies and do it any other way.
I'll also just share a little bit of context around. The intention here and then some potential next steps and then, wait, I forgot. Can I invite, sorry, that, that, can I invite Catherine to join this conversation? Catherine, would you like to join this conversation? I know you just sat down.
Also.
Um, Catherine, because I, so I'm just curious also like from your lens, what, what either stands out to you as something that you're like, oh, like. It's exciting or something, or you're like, I wonder.
I mean, I think that that would, I mean, these are. Wonderful goals along the target of we want kids to come into school every day. I'm really excited for. The. Work that we've done in contract negotiations on. Curriculum selection, so I look forward to. That becoming part of the conversation once we're ready to bring it into article conversation. I think that there's been some really. Incredible work there. And I missed the beginning of the conversation, so I can't comment to anything. Anybody said before back here?
So I'll just give a little bit of context. I'm trying to set little timers just so you know, because I know a lot of the agenda items, I know we can't go late. Both because I believe it's wrong to go late and also because there will be another meeting here. Where apparently Tricia, there are speakers want to come to that meeting, but not this one. So a little bit of context, especially about the terms common and coherent, just because it came up from Aaron. The intention of those terms and. I'm indifferent to terms for what it's worth. It's, it's actually, it's a relatively common way to describe. What is starting to happen in our elementary schools and across multiple districts is the idea of. As opposed to students, when I was a student in the other good state school district, whether I had. Actually news names, teacher A, B, or C for fifth grade, I was going to have a radically different curricular experience. As some teachers were like, I'm going to teach phonics. Some students were like, I'm not going to teach phonics. Like everyone sort of had their own mentality, which. Had, which had some strengths, but also frankly went to inequities. Instructional inequities in terms of what students got. And I think in the elementary school, you start to see some really exciting ways. That things have become, whether we want to say common, coherent, or consistent. That's sort of what we mean there, as opposed to saying that all students are the same. But then a quick story and then Mary, I would love to do the, also like then jump in because I'd love to hear from Catherine and Mary from this group. A potential next step is if this is sort of like a guiding North Star for this group and a direction that the district has already started to move in that we want to help. Because we see. We see it advancing the goals of culture of excellence and equity. The question is. I worked for a school network where. At one point, the goal of that network was college, essentially college. Graduation for all students. Then at some point, the school network realized, maybe that's not an appropriate goal. Maybe we're sort of like itching for our students, like saying that like you're all going to. Achieve the same thing regardless of whether or not that is your life goal. What they did was they created a statement similar, like sort of like a restatement, like what their vision was and they shared it with every single family. Every single student, I think, or at least every single middle, like every single student who would be able to take a survey and. Respond to it, every single teacher administrator. Involved across that school network and sort of like got input. And then clarified the vision and like feedback. And I wonder if there's lessons we can learn from that, because I think that we have a very involved community and incredibly involved teaching. Staff and like incredibly involved administrators, name all the things. And so I'm curious. In particular, I think maybe from Mary, Catherine, and then from any other committee members. What are our thoughts on if we wanted to say that in our next curriculum committee meeting? We would love to say, hey. Like we've gathered input and like here's, and we feel confident that we can say like this is our direction moving forward. Whenever you're, yeah, I'm sorry, whenever you're ready, if you want to skip or not talk, that's totally your call as well.
So in regards to common. I think that intent, when I, as I'm reflecting on that and thinking Jacob for putting up what we discussed in print to see it. A shared. It's really about a shared experience. So I would make that recommendation that students have a shared. And consistent experience. The word consistent is, you know, when Emily, you were talking about the points and some shifts we made. It was really a shared collaboration. So maybe it's shared collaborative experience, but that's one piece. And for me, that intent of having this and not in the US, maybe having this. As a, as a guide is if we are to resume the practice that we did prior to COVID of instructional rounds. That we have something that we're using to guide. Those instructional rounds for going into classrooms. And a, and a focus. I'm struggling with the notion of what we can control versus what we can't control. We can control what we do. We can't control what students experience. And this is a very students will. Students will have this experience, students will feel this way. Centered. Document, but. That's not really within our control, especially like we love coming to school each day, like. That's, that is a lovely goal and I don't think the best have been our focus. So I'm just, I'm just kind of, I'm just cognitively struggling with that notion as well.
And I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna like, I think there's potential edits to make and we can talk about that as a process. I'm gonna hold off on. Sharing that right now, but would also love to.
Catherine articulated exactly how I feel. I think students will be and will love coming is. An unrealistic expectation. Some students just don't like school. Some students, it's not a good fit. I think. In ICSD. We. Will create. A safe and supportive environment for students so they can focus on learning and reaching their full potential. And I really want to make sure that as we look at our goals. Instead of it being graduation or college or whatever, it's full potential because that then allows for each student to be recognized. Within their own capabilities instead of societal expectations that are ableist and antiquated. The love coming to school part, that's just, some students will never love that. That's where we, as a school. Will be actively engaged to. Actively engage with students to support them. And hopefully appreciating how to learn. But putting the goals on students is, is not, I don't think that's. Possible.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I think this, we're, we're setting the occasion. I think we're trying to say like, what, like, what conditions will we set as a school district? And then what student experience will be, we shall see, but I think we're trying to come up with like, what? What is the, like, what parameters do we want to put forward? And, and keep in mind as we're designing things and doing things. So I think that's a good point and that, that we won't, we won't know what students are going to think or feel ever. But we can, we can decide how we want to set the occasion. That's the best that we can do.
I would also want to put something in there. About community engagement. Because so much of what we do as a school. That success of a school district is also dependent on community supports, community activism. Parents, caregivers, families, what other things are in place. ICSD cannot control every single factor that will impact our students. And so putting this solely on us. Is. It, it's too much. And I think, you know, adding a piece about community engagement, I don't know how to make that happen or how to word it. I think it's important because those partnerships are what lead to success because. Yes, it's a long time where students are in school. But there are so many factors that contribute from the outside and impact our school day. And so how can we work that into our goal setting and acknowledge how important that is?
By the way, I'm writing down everything that we will save for data. I'm, I'm a fast speaker, and so. Just saying now so that we have a.
I think the only thing that I would add is. Like constant reflection. Of how those practices are actually. Impacting students in the district and, and kind of revising. Always thinking about how to improve the work.
So one potential next step. And we should, we should sort of like move on from this conversation. But one potential next step is, like Catherine, Mary, when we do agenda setting. Like I would propose that we take the notes from these folks and like, and sort of like refine anything that like seems obvious to agree on. And then. I, I mean, personally, I think it would be a beneficial thing to share this out with teachers. With administrators, potentially with community members, although I understand that there's a thing called overload for, you know, for anyone. The way I saw it done in the past, frankly, was it was just a, here's. A thing worth thinking and like write an open ended response. Some people took that as an opportunity to say, no, thank you. I'm going to delete the email. Some took it as an opportunity to say, I will write you an essay. And some people wrote it to like share like little word smithing. And curious, Mary, Catherine, does that sound like a reasonable next step? Okay. So I'm capturing for myself like that, like in terms of an active item. So like we'll have like the sharing. I guess like in terms of order, we'll first go to like. Minimal revisions based on the really excellent feedback that we all shared. Then sharing and then for our next curriculum meeting, we'll sort of like share out a revised version based on the input and the rationale for why we devised it. In the way that we have. Are there any concerns, questions, wondering about what I, that next step that I just proposed? Awesome. Well, thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. Next up. Unless there's any public comment. Sorry, Tricia, I'm just gonna keep on saying that. Yeah, just, just as a joke that no one laughed at, that's all. So it's time for us to do the culture and climate survey data review. And that's Lynn and Mary. Wait, and Catherine, you, you sure you don't want to?
I'll come over here. I like to, I like to, I like to sit and laugh at a table, so I'll take that invitation.
Let it be noted that twice Catherine refused to sit. Also, if anyone wants my, my, tonight they, they Thompson, they're pretty good.
No, I don't want that one.
Sustain yourself through this meeting. And based on the time, I, I was thinking that probably this should be around 10 to 15 minutes. Did that sound appropriate?
We can be shorter if we'd like to.
Okay, say a maximum of 10 minutes? Okay, great, on your mark.
So I did prepare a presentation that just pulls out key questions from the survey. We can either go through that or, or have you, if you prefer, another option would be for you all to have that to review on your own and then we can. Answer questions back. So I look to you all.
How many slides?
I think it's 14, but they're pretty short.
I think they'd like 12 slides, 14 slides.
I would, I would. Let's watch the slides and, and pay attention to the questions. That we're asking because the intent, we collaborate with. K2 insight, that's correct, to create this survey so that they're high quality questions. And so you might notice. That would be really great feedback for us because we don't want to over survey or, you know. So having, we've seen that the survey response rate for this, because sometimes teachers make time for students to take it in their class. And administrators take time for staff to take it. In staff meetings, that it's got a pretty good response rate. But there might be things, you know, questions that you want asked that. So that's like the one caveat I would.
And this is not every question that is included in the survey. I'm sharing questions that are aligned to the board, the current board goals and also ICSD learning forward. Right, so for 2425, the survey was administered in late April 2025. For it was open for about three weeks, the response period. This is about the same timing as we've used for the past three years. And the survey that we use this year was consistent. No questions were changed, so we have comparative data over three years. With the exception of a few school specific questions added. In DJM, Hugo Heights and Dewitt specifically to answer questions related to their, their planning process for their school. You can see here, this was how many responses we received. Over a thousand students. 1600 parents and 398 staff. This, you know, it's. Response rates. For parents regarding is it's about 27%. For students, it's around, right around 20%. And then, I'm sorry, that's not correct. Students, it's right around 39%. It's grade six to 12 only that we, we survey. And then our staff response rate is around 18%.
So 39% of 60.
Of six or 12 graders, yeah. And those numbers may seem low to some people, but actually 20% response rate in the survey is, is actually pretty good in survey, survey world. So we always want more participation, but I'm happy with what we have. What else I want to say about, I don't think anything about.
And you might say to both parents of a child, so in a way like it could be 20%, 20, it could be more percentage of families, but. Individual is just 20%.
Correct, yes. So invitations for, for our caregivers are. Individual email and text invitations were sent to any. Receives mail contact first, so that'd be two, three, or for some students, yes.
By two kids, I fill it out twice.
Yeah, so we do ask, we do ask that caregivers fill out a survey for each of their children, whether or not they choose to do that. It's. And the reason we ask that is because we recognize that student experience can vary dramatically, even with the same family and we. You're forgetting that I am the one who's like looking for it to go. That's not working. I don't have that magic yet. I think it's important for us to just acknowledge that response. Look at how responses align with our district demographics, right? So we're always thinking about who we're hearing from and who we're not and maybe who is overrepresented in the sample. Now this K12 insight uses census sampling, so it's, you know, we put it out to everybody, we get who we, who responds. And so this is a representation of the thoughts and perceptions of those respondents. And it's inappropriate to try to make like statistical generalizations to like. The population as a whole. So this is. Important, relevant data, but it's not, we can't say because the samples thinks this, we can apply that to everybody, right? So up here you'll see that the, the left-hand column is looking at the percentage. The breakdown of race, ethnicity, demographics for our student enrollment population at the time of the survey. And then you can see in the surveys, we ask students to identify themselves within race, ethnicity, subgroups. Or categories, and we ask parents to identify the child who they were responding about. So ideally, right, we'd like to see the numbers be the same all the way across. That would say we can have a representative sampling. And, and you can see that we have, we have some. Differences in representation. Now, tricky thing about this is just difference in how the data is collected. So. On the K12 insight survey, folks can pick more than one. One. Category, so that's why the numbers add up to more than 100%. That is not a math error, it's just the way the data is collected. Whereas in our student enrollment data, that's looking at. Classification of race, ethnicity, based on the business rules of state and federal reporting. So looks at someone category. But overall, it's, I, I, it's not like a huge difference, so that's good. I'm glad that we have. Relative. So overall satisfaction, you already got it. So there's a question for each population. Throughout all of these slides. We have not seen any major shifts in the data over the last three years. We've seen slight increases or decreases. Sometimes it's up one or two percent from. 2023 to 24 and then back down or vice versa. So. There's no wild swings in the data, I would say, over the past three years. You know, when I look at this. Of course, I'm always like students first. I would love to see that student satisfaction increase significantly. I will note that parent satisfaction has increased over the past three years, so 2% each year. So that's great to see. Always love to see it more.
Just a question for clarification. There's two parts of the survey, right? One is about their experience in the school. And then one is about the district, or like, I'm thinking about parents specifically, about their experience with the district. Is the satisfaction. Those combined or one of those pieces or the other?
So there's a question, I believe it's the first question on the set, on the survey for caregivers, is just ask overall, how satisfied are you with your student, your child's experience in the ITA? So it doesn't differentiate with that within this overall satisfaction rating. And the same question structure is the same for the other two stakeholder groups where it's just basically like, if you were going to rate this, like reading your Uber ride, right? Like, how would you rate your overall experience?
Okay.
A holistic rating of satisfaction.
Do you, maybe this is getting ahead of ourselves, but do you, like, is there have you looked to see if this is like an average of feelings about like specific schools versus the district, or is this on par with both of them? Do you know what I mean? Um.
Yeah, so we don't, uh, that is, that's an important, just a thing to point at this. The survey does not ask you to distinguish between your feelings about the school and the district, and that is actually feedback we perceive from caregivers that and staff, like if I was reading this about my school that I work in or my school that my child goes to, I might respond differently than when you're asking about the district.
I feel it does, so it's I.
It does, I think that uh just this year, uh no, it doesn't, but we can, I can, that can be a follow up. I'm happy to find the question.
I feel like there's so many that say, is my child feel well, I don't think comfortable in the school, and then there's like.
I can follow up shot, I'm just like a list of the question. So moving into just alignment with our, these are board uh visions of success, aligns the board goals. I realize these goals are from, I think, two thousand eighteen, but they are still the current goals, maybe two thousand nineteen. Um, so a hundred percent of students will report that they have a very positive relationship with at least one adult in school. We're at ninety three percent, and this has been relatively consistent, so that's something to celebrate. Um, and uh it's really an indicator of of like school wellness, I think, right, like that that single relationship, it's something um that is a strong indicator.
I I just wanted to know that it's been around ten minutes. I'm sure we want more, I'm sure we want more time, so.
Well, let's just say five. Yeah, yeah. Great, thank you. Uh, this next board vision of success is around uh curriculum and student experience within the classroom. I won't read it to you. Um, again, these numbers have not shifted uh over the past three years, and this is actually, I would say one of the slides and data points that as a curriculum committee, I think is really worth paying attention to, and as as an instructional leader is is form work at the front of my mind, right? Um, so how can we make how can we understand student experience more and ensure that that experience is feeling meaningful and relevant in reverse?
Yeah, when I, when I see that, I think a lot about what we were talking about with consistency. It's it's hard to get a hundred percent of students to agree with something when the definition of rigorous level and content might very wild, but it can one fix.
Yeah, I would also add, as a teacher, and I think teachers can experience this when they do exit tickets of a student's experience in a class that you might have a group of students say, I want more group work. And a group of students say, I want less group work. So that's also something to explore, the things that surface in both columns. As a feedback, both as an instructor and for us, as we're looking at these results.
So looking at the board vision of success around uh culturally responsive and relevant curriculum. Um, again, these numbers haven't changed dramatically. The um gap in perception between students and staff, I think is what's important to pay attention here, and this is not it's not, there's no blame or fault. I think where this points for us is an opportunity for um for us to make our 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 intent more clear to students about how we are making and and how we are designing curriculum and how we feel like that's responsive to students. And at the same time, so much to Mary's point, like, how how are we, how are teachers getting more short course feedback from students on on lessons and units that they can adapt to currently, right? So at the end of the unit, you know, asking students to reflect on how um on some of these goals around that unit, so you can adjust along the way.
How do, how are we? I'm trying to think, how are we defining culture? I I guess I I'm I'm interested in this because in my experience with surveys like this, we would ask about getting to know students as individuals as opposed to getting to know a culture. Do we ask questions about that?
Um, there, there is a question later that specifies a little bit more about uh students get to know me, or sorry, my teachers get to know me, and it has some descriptors, but um I think that's important to think about how are students defining culture, right, versus teacher? We do not ask about as an individual, that is not currently questioned unless they.
There, so there may be some words where there, they really aren't operational definitions, so if you use the word culture, everybody's just thinking of their own definition of that. If we wanted to dive more deeply into that, we could provide a definition of, if it like, you know, by culture, we mean X, Y, Z. Um, if one wanted to, wanted to that. But that's just, that's interesting, and that just happens, I think, a lot with surveys that obviously people interpret reflections through their own lens. That's just one of the drawbacks, but but sometimes providing definitions.
This, uh, the board vision for success around communication, um, this is an area where we have seen a a steady increase over the past three years, so how um caregivers are knowing about communications from the district, and this is specifically about the district, it doesn't say school, it says from the district. Shout out to our communications department. And then um about meaningful opportunities to be heard, which continues to be kind of the the lowest out of all of our communication bill, so um how to make that interactive. Come up many times at both this meeting and the broader board meeting about how do these structures, right, structures we have um sometimes impede that meaningful connection. Nothing new, which is great. And um now we're shifting, there's four slides on our alignment to learning board ICSD. Students as partners and leaders is one of the four tenants. These again have not shifted a lot over the years. I think something to note with this is, uh, this is the question on the student survey where we have the largest percentage of students that respond, I don't know, so about twelve percent respond, I don't know, to each of these, which I think points to um kind of that shared uh definition of what uh what this could look like, and then also make raising awareness around opportunities to do exist.
For what's worth, and I'm sure we'll talk about this later, but when Emily and I were at one of the sessions, especially thinking about those student reps for the board. We've heard from a district that had just a really interesting process, this sort of like school level reps, district level reps, um, and then board reps that were sort of like mentored by principals who were in the board. Um, working towards leadership projects, um, was very interesting. I know that that's something that I imagine will like that will be brought up in policy. A cool stuff.
Educator identity work is another tenant. This is definitely, you know, something to celebrate, I think. We had a consistent and considerable uh investment in professional development around helping teachers uh unpack and understand their identity and how that impacts their practice. We have the micro credential strand. Specifically, um, with that being said, um, I think when we look at this data, when we're looking at students and educators. Um, and here Jacob is the question where we ask, how frequently do you feel like your courses, assignments help you learn something about yourself? Uh, with some definition, and that teachers are designed specifically for students. And we'll again see that large gap in perception, right? I think it's for the earlier curriculum, like, um is a a window into a place where we can do more inquiry and learning. Structures of support, on it. Then relatively flat up and down about one or two percent between twenty three and twenty five. When we look at student and staff well being, um in terms of connection, belonging, control and safety.
Questions, yeah, agreeing, we're firmly agreeing with you.
Yeah, absolutely. So uh for the connection category, uh, students are asked, I feel connected to my school community. And staff are asked, I feel connected with my school slash work community, because um when we're talking about staff for questions that are not instructionally focused, this is holistic of all uh employees of the ICP, so that might be transportation or food service. Uh, for belonging, students are asked, how frequently did you feel that your teachers made you feel that you belong? Staff are asked, I feel like I belong in my school slash work community. And for safety, students are asked, I feel well cared for in terms of health and safety. Staff are asked, I feel well cared for in terms of.
Thank you for sharing. Questions, comments, concerns, next steps. I know when it comes to agenda setting, I'm and I I personally just, I'm wondering and interested in the disconnect between how educators are feeling and how students are feeling in some of those. And I am just also wondering about like some of the questions and like the things we ask and some and like the things we don't ask. I guess just because I'm I'm coming from the educational world of like asking more questions like and maybe this happens in other surveys, like, do teachers feel supported by administrators, like good administrators feel supported, but like, do they have the resources they need to do their jobs, like? Do you feel like able to participate in your class and that your teacher is engaging you? So I wonder, I guess I wonder like do we have space for more of the rudimentary questions? I'm still pissed off in front of my man.
I want to get that.
Yeah, I mean, I I wonder about um like unpack, I I'd be very interested in unpacking the rationale for for the answers. And I wonder if that could be accomplished in some kind of follow up work, like for example, if you had a sample of students or teachers or parents and sort of saying, tell us ways that you feel supported in this one district, tell us ways that you don't. Tell us ways that you see yourself in the curriculum, tell us ways that you don't. Um, I think it would be very interesting to hear the answers, because I guess in the absence of that, we look at a question, you know, we see that that there's some lack. And then we're trying to fix the lack, like, oh, I think I know what we can do if we want this to happen, then we can do that. You know, if we want this to happen, we could do that, but without really getting the direct feedback, then we're just sort of projecting our own potential solutions into the void and trying to see how those potential solutions might change the data next year, but it might be nice to get some feedback. Um, that might help direct our methodologies about how we're going to try to change some of their things that improve some of their categories that were lower than we would like. Uh, so just one, one item.
We had a number of these conversations last year. I think the expression is like, of similar things to what both as you are saying, um, the goal behind the question itself, like the what is the goal, and if the goal is to improve upon things, it seems like we're missing a lot of information in order to do that. Um, so the one thing that I see that's positive is that it's kind of if if we're keeping the questions consistent, we're seeing over time that whether our guesses of what we should do are working and then can maybe change to something else, but it's probably creating years and years worth of dozens and then recorrections and dozens and recorrections instead of taking the time to really drill down into even what like some some priorities are and taking the time to only survey about those things this year, of course, maybe aligned with, you know, Dr. Brown's um his goals or the district goals or the board goals or whatever it is, and it doesn't have to necessarily be all encompassing, but what we're really trying to get at is X, Y and Z. Um, to to take the time to really get the answers in addition to just the overall sentiment. Um, and I would just say from a uh uh chair point of view, I we started to have these conversations more deeply a little bit in the second half of last year, and by the time that uh Lynn and I had an opportunity to like sit down and talk about it, and it's like very, very close to when the survey was going to actually be able to go out, so um, I think even in this conversation, like, there's not new things coming up right now of like, what are we really learning? How useful is this information? And that maybe to make something actually happen this year is like the committee wanted to work with the team to kind of think about like, maybe there's like one piece of this that this year we might want to see if we can like fix or, you know, try a different avenue, like, might be good, doing that sooner rather than later, so that Lynn has the opportunity both to hear some thoughts of that and then also work with our partners and whatever, I'm forgetting their names already. Um, I think that that takes a little bit of time based on our conversation last year, so I think
There's sort of like two, two things in mind. One is like the quite like, at what, like, when do we revisit? potentially add, remove questions that are asked. And also, um, I mean, honestly, the slide that you named, when we were like, this is the one that we are probably best situated to and we are as a curriculum committee best situated to address the the academic slide, um, as well as probably some of the the cult like, not necessarily the culture slide, so like the the student, essentially, like the two things that are the the primary focus of the vision statement that we talked about, whether the student's academic experience at school and how are we creating, I mean, engaging experience at school.
I just, I feel like I might have asked something very, very similar many years ago. But when I see these surveys, all I can think of is when I see the student responses is they feel developmentally appropriate in that students are contrary to adults, I think of my own experience, even as a super nerd, where you have a total lack of empathy for the human experience of what your teachers may be going through, and you expect perfection and forget that they're human and make mistakes and a lower score. And and I wonder, you know, you mentioned that things haven't changed much in three years. I wonder if historically those surveys have changed much. And I wonder if there would be an opportunity, not that there is resources, whether it be staff or financial, but I'd be more interested in a focus group of students where you can have a sit down and exchange, so when they answer in a certain way, you can actually push and and follow up with questions to really get a more clear picture, because I think that to tell as old as time, students are just who they are at this age, I think we all were. And I think the numbers are always going to be lower, and it might not necessarily reflect the hard work that's being done by the adults in the room, not to say that there's not room for improvement by all of us, but um I don't know how to, I I would like to find a way to capture a more clear picture, and I don't think the surveys always say it.
I think you and Adam are both describing, there's some more like similar ideas around which resonates a lot. I think there's value in both, right, like a survey can give you very big picture like information, but like a focus group, especially when it comes to actions. I think the key is how do you get a representative group of students to the degree that you can have a representative student.
So I would, I would add that we have teachers who are really um who have been very gracious in inviting us into their classrooms throughout the year. So last year, myself and a group of Ithaca High School administrators were invited to visit by students to visit their classroom because they wanted us to hear about how that classroom worked in affirming their identities and having, they felt they were highly engaged. Um, experienced a strong sense of belonging, and so we came in and witnessed the Socratic seminar that their educator had been facilitating all semester and took notes, and that resulted in those students
And that resulted in those students offering insights at the educator orientation. And so. I couldn't agree more that beyond the survey. Identifying where this is happening and students are indeed telling us where they're seeing this and experiencing it and celebrating it. And that was incredibly powerful to get, you know, to watch. And experience. As a potential, the focus group doesn't have to be something that we construct. It's already there. I would offer that.
So captured sometimes for like for the next agenda setting, like you think that. What I'm hearing from folks is like, yeah, what are we asking? Why are we asking it? The idea of like surveys, focus groups, however, we're defining focus groups. And generally, I'm just curious to like structures and timelines to like what we're doing right now. Has a routine cadence in terms of when we look at the data, like when does it become fresh on the media. And hopefully potentially what might have happened in the past, but by the time we're looking at it's too late.
Yeah, because you know what I've experienced is three other leaders reaching out to me. Who heard from those students and like, hey, can I have that resource? So although I, so I do know it had an impact if we're thinking about the scale of. Effort being our our access and access and. Impact being the why, that that was a fairly low effort for significant impact on the students.
I think just one, one last, if I can say one last, just thinking psycho, I know, psycho metrically speaking, like just thinking about the the numbers and the data. I think it could also be very, very helpful to get some data back from the survey company to find out like across school districts, you know, if similar questions are asked. You know, in other districts, like what percentage of students are, you know, affirming these particular questions so that like if we say that sixty percent of students are are satisfied. And we're thinking like, oh, sixty percent, that's enough. And it turns out that across all the school districts, you know, that use this fifty-two percent is the average and more sixty percent. It does contextualize that, you know, going back to Aaron's point. Because because it does sort of help answer that question, the tale was old this time question, like are students just negating these questions and just being surly? Or are they, you know, really responding higher or lower than some kind of a bar that we can compare to? And then, of course, we we can go back and decide amongst ourselves, even if we're beating the average, we're still happy with it, but only sixty percent. But that might be helpful too. Because also when we see, when we see good numbers on the survey, like, oh, ninety percent of the students were, you know, happy in this particular category. We do celebrate that. So we don't want to say, well, in this case, what was forty percent? That's just a survey. So we have to like reconcile how we're going to feel about the numbers. So just, just adding that.
I'm also looking back particularly at the, at like what I think is probably the one student percentage that we're all kind of worried about. How frequently did you feel that your course assignments helped you learn something about yourself? And like as an English teacher, I would hope that kids in my class would be like, oh, no, I'm learning to help myself and others in the way we work. But like in AP physics, if you're taking this, how frequently did my AP physics course teach me something about my soul? Might get different results. And I'm wondering if it's in the asking of the question and the environment in which the question is being answered. That's creating some of that because there's, because if you look at it like how frequently do you feel that your teachers created opportunities for students to discuss race, racism. Oppression, which is really where the identity work kind of ties in, but it's very different percentage. So students are seeing the identity work in practice. But then reporting that, you know, in course assignments, I think it's vague and broad for many adolescents to really practice.
Yeah, I captured all the news from like comparative data or time and the environment in which we had the question advanced and how it advanced. All of which are things where maybe there are like clear, like. We either should have a clear like protocol or answer that, or if we don't, then we should have one and articulate it, which will be. Not something we need to get into right now, but suffice to say, it has been captured and noted. Given that the full board meeting happens and I think we should take at least three minutes or five minutes before to not be here. I just want to highlight that we have deeper dive into the MTSS data, which is a slide deck that like we have access to. We have a categorical strategy for tutoring updates. I. My inclination is for us to spend five minutes on this hearing update because that was the follow-up from last time and then to see. What we have from there. That that resonating with folks.
Yeah, I mean, my philosophy last year was just if we need to, we could say, come back to it as opposed to rushing through.
Yeah, so that's why I think tutoring, because I think it will not be a rush. So. Is that okay? Would you be willing to talk to us about tutoring? I know we had some questions on two last time.
Sure. Yeah, they have to remind me of those questions. Let me give you the updates that I have. So tutoring will be starting. Next week in three of the five schools and within the next two weeks in all five of our schools. And again, that's BJM, Cuba Heights. Enfield, Button, and Dewitt. We have hired the teachers to coordinate that and all of our buildings at this point. Those teacher leads have been appointed and have been on board for reports. And what else? Numbers vary between fifteen to twenty-five in each of those buildings. So how essentially. For each of those five schools, buildings were allocated. Fifteen groups, right? So ten of those fifteen groups were for individual students. So that's ten students and then five that we. Used individually or in a small groups up to groups of three, right? So. One school has has decided that we wanted to focus based on the students that they have identified, all individuals. So they are sorry, fifteen students for those fifteen slots. Another building is trying as three twenty-five, so they have ten individual and three small groups. And we'll be working in eight-week cycles with tutoring. In using data to inform, to inform us whether adjustments need to be made to those groups or. Adjustments need to be made to the content that tutors are working with, or perhaps if tutoring isn't the right match for a student for various reasons. We look at attendance or.
I know that we also hit it. I think you're answering a lot of the questions like after last time, we also had questions around. Cost of the tutoring program and how that cost is covered.
Yes, and I am pulling that up right now.
And then Catherine, I think you had a question.
So the cost of the tutoring is covered through the grants that we receive that are one-time only. Or, you know, as as the is allocated per the designations.
So it's school improvement grant funding. And the total contract is for two hundred and five thousand dollars. That is per person and cost of one thousand dollars and eight per student for the small group tutoring. What's the cost? One thousand eight dollars. And that's for up to for twenty-four weeks, ninety minutes of you in the small group settings up to three. For individual student tutoring. It's two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine per student for twenty-four weeks, ninety minutes.
That answers my question. I know.
Yeah, I was, so this came up last week and one of the things that I've been yielding and hearing, you know. Forever is how the extra work opportunities for our secondary staff versus our elementary staff are pretty different. And hearing a program of tutoring that's but you know, that. Elementary, that's after school at elementary, especially elementary staff were like, wait, how do I become involved in that tutoring? So can you explain a little bit how we? How we got to hiring an outside tutoring company rather than doing, offering the tutoring with staff that we recruit from in-house? And whether that is long-term plan, whether there is an opportunity for interested in-house staff to be involved?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, of course, you know, our, our ideal would be. For staff to be doing it. So we had the hosting up and there were no applicants. So if folks are extended and are not able to take on those additional duties. This was our next step thinking as as far as supporting them. And of course, it's a work in progress, right? But maybe. Next year or in the summer, people are going to be at a different spot in different places. I would say, I know we compete against ourselves with all the other things that are happening and going on in it at times with the staffing that we have. So.
Aside from just posting it on the website, was there any other? It's like, I'm going to be completely honest, the conversation surprised me and when people are like, what is this something? It's the first I'm hearing about it. So I'm just wondering how, you know, and I'm not in the classroom every day, so sometimes I don't get the building lists, but. The general sense was. Yeah, and yeah, we're no longer, we're no longer getting postings emailed to us at the buildings. We used to. We are no longer getting postings and emails to us.
So that sounds like something that you need to do better. Postings going out so you'll no longer receiving postings. Yeah, from at the building level that go up on the district updates. Hey, there's a new posting on the website and it goes to the list.
Hey, so I don't, I'm not on any building list. Nancy can speak to Caroline, but. We we've sent them forwarded from our secretary and I don't know if they stop forwarding them to her, so she has nothing to forward. Or if she was instructed or I don't know.
Okay.
Just know that we used to get them and for example, I didn't know about the map. I learned about it at the last.
Okay, I let's follow up on that next week. I'll talk with our chair department and then we can.
So I just add like one of the reasons that was one of, one of many reasons that made this particular partner attractive to us with Tara is that they were, they are. We need to be willing to partner with us that if we do have. Teaching staff that we would like to service tutors, that those teachers could work through those, their platform. And receive training around their teaching curriculum. So when we think about consistency and experience and also the like. Purpose monitor and use data, right? So this would allow for us to utilize internal staff. To deliver a coherent tutoring and.
So would it be appropriate at this point to do a round of recruitment on that to at least provide the opportunity? And make it really clear like the parameters of what you're. What you're signing up for? Or are we, or has that, or is it like next cycle?
I think that it would have to be next though, just because Lutera has already like matched like the tutors that are starting next week. They have already from their pool of tutor matched students, the tutors that is starting in two days. But that's definitely, I will bring to them that suggestion if that could next topic ability for the next cycle. Okay.
Sounds like. Is there one, at what point will we be? Might be helpful, maybe not to ask like to when this is being set up, you're asked about future interests. It's not that probably already been thought about. And it sounds like there is an agreement that something is like, I guess something happens with the communication and that we want to. Not like to fix it.
We want to do better. Yeah, yeah, cool. Absolutely. Thank you.
Should all have some. So. I am confident that we do not have time to talk about the deeper dive that I added to our agenda. Let's talk a little bit about that agenda and how to. That information.
Can we ask? Do we have time?
Yes.
Just for the two.
Yes.
So there were concerns about like access to like computers at home and having somebody who was like actually able to support kid to sit at a computer for ninety minutes, which. Might be challenging for some students. It sounds like. Sometimes it's happening at school, after school. Is it still? In multiple different places and related to that, can you talk a little bit more about the? You said that there are like teachers that have been assigned to like, what does that role look like and how is that supporting like all of these fifteen to plus students?
Yeah, absolutely. So just to clarify that ninety minutes is spread out either over two or three sessions per week. It's either two forty-five minute sessions or three thirty minute sessions. We don't expect any children to sit nine minutes in something like here. In terms of the at-home tutoring, again, a positive of this company that we partnered with. So the Cuba Heights has three students who are going to be participating from home and they're just. That was collaboration between building leadership, the lead teacher and the families to say, yes, this is something we feel like we can support. And just talked to technology this morning, we are providing devices for the chat for them to at home. So that is still a possibility and only one school is utilizing that model for this first round and we're going to kind of learn from that and see how that goes. The lead teacher in each building is, will be the one who is supervising the after-school tutoring session for there to help support that they're getting on. The computer, being able to intervene when there, if there are problems. I mean, the hope is that the tutoring will be engaging, right? That's what we've been sold on, right? So we'll be watching that. I think if we're finding that we are needing lots of management to keep kids engaged in the sessions, that's good feedback to us that perhaps is the simplest partner for us.
Do the staff that are helping facilitate this, do they pay out of the grant or is that a dis?
They are paid out of the grant. So there's a point one six seven savings. That are paid through the SIG for the school improvement grant fund.
And so it's after the first eight-week period. That's the first day that we can, that will, that you'll, like, how are you?
Yeah, we, I mean, we'll get data every session, but that, that's like the cycle we're using. It's looking and seeing if we want to make adjustments to student groupings, if we want to add or remove students. I will say the contract is for a year, right? So and if any unused hours can carry over into the summer for us. So like if we don't use all of the hours we can use during project innovation or other ways in the summer. But in terms of reevaluation, it's not like we can scrap the whole thing or we might be wasting our.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I have, I think at this point, I would love to move us into, are there any other? I essentially are there. So in terms of action items and agenda setting for the next meeting, I will name the next time. We should talk about like just a quick update on like the tutoring to like tutoring communication. Like solution moving forward, whatever that may be to follow up on a vision, which at that point we shall have redrafted based on input from the stakeholders that we described. So we can sort of have a guidance force for our work, work moving forward. And from there, I know we'll need to talk about focus groups, like teacher focus groups, which is something that I believe Karen brought up last time. It's like a powerful strategy that I think we can have really focused ideas like Catherine about like what can we talk about? Particularly around curriculum adoption and hopefully we will also have updates on next steps for survey in terms of what is the, what are the structures we have? And to do the, the two and we did not get to today. So not a full agenda at all will be. With that, it is time for people, we are done in thirty seconds. Are there any other things that we will be doing before we? Yes.
At the last facilities and finance meeting, we discussed. The possibility of being able to have some sort of a joint. Meeting between potential meetings between curriculum and finance to be able to. Talk about helping the community better understand the way that our. Our goals are being for or meaning student roots within every school are being influenced, they're into. Budgetary decisions at the school rather. And so the chairman of that committee suggested that maybe there's like that kind of. In tandem with so that Mary and Dawn were there to kind of talk about like what initiatives are coupled with like. Probably the budgeting since a lot of the community questions last year was like, I don't understand where my money is going in this.
See that we are sort of nodding and it's nice. So that makes me, that's as a straight hash shirt and I might ask for some more context if that's really helpful. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Adam, for teaching me how to be a chair. Thank you, Tricia, for dealing with me. Emily, for you for being part of the committee, we were assigned to other ones to follow. Aaron, more. See you all in four minutes for the.